Also, I thought had a really good idea to think about an ordinance that would make all backyards, all projects, all new homes in particular LEED certified. And if we do go through the LEED certification process, hardscapes would be regulated and so we could also have a climate action plan with these new homes. So that would be really one recommendation from us. And Commissioners, do you want to add anything to that?
I'll say, I know that the residential design guidelines do comment on backyard hardscaping just to the extent that extensive backyard hardscaping can cause excessive rain runoff, water runoff, and that is discouraged in the wording of the design guidelines. But I would agree, it would be nice to see something in the code.
Thank you. Yeah, so that would be recommendation number one. Number two, and it's not necessarily in any specific order, but we were also concerned about the notice provisions and whether the notice was really being received by the neighbors. It was amazing how many times we would get projects that would say, oh, well, we gave the notice to 10 neighbors and zero responded. Like, what? And then, and yet then we might get one or two projects where 10 people would respond. And it just seemed like if you really made an effort, you could get people to respond. It was very inconsistent, very spotty, and it led us to wonder, should we require maybe the city to provide notice, paid for by the applicant, of course? Do we need to do something about making sure that that notice is better? And, I mean, I know staff would have some ideas about that, too, but that's something we really want to talk about. And then also the idea that maybe when it's continued, and I do say when the item is continued, you know this, I didn't say if, because it seems like pretty much every project is continued at least once, to talk about whether we should also make sure they notify the same people about the continuance. And I know an argument can be made, if they got it the first time, they should be following along, but it's just something to consider. We were concerned, that there just didn't seem a lot of neighborhood participation. Comments, Commissioners?
I would just add to that, that with regards to if a project is being continued or when it's being continued, that, you know, if there are major modifications that we are asking for, at that point, we feel that the neighborhood needs to be re-informed of those changes. Sometimes designs are completely different, they haven't just incorporated the few notes that we've had, and I think those are the times when we're very concerned that neighbors need to be told again, because the plans at that point have changed a lot. So that would be the only other additional comment or expansion of that that I would say.
Really helpful, thank you.
Other comments here?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I also, I also think it would be helpful, with any notification of neighbors, there ought to be some sort of standardized language that is included in that notification that advises the neighbor what they have a right to see and review prior to the hearing. A lot of times, just anecdotally, I get comments from residents who were exasperated with the system because they weren't aware that they had a right to actually see plans as opposed to just hearing a verbal description, and that verbal description may or may not accurately reflect what is being proposed.
Thank you, yeah. So I think that helps you to understand, Council members, at least I hope so. Next is landscape plans. This is another issue that we really saw over and over again. We'd get these projects and we'd see these huge homes, and then there'd be nothing about landscape. And this, I'm mainly talking about the front yard, obviously, we'd like to get the backyard, too. But, so we think, again, if an ordinance is required, or what would be required, it would be very helpful to require a landscape plan with all submissions. Commissioners, do you want to add on?
I emphatically agree.
Raymond, did you want to say something? I'm sorry.
Yes, I do, I'm sorry. Yeah, I think a landscape plan should be required, especially for your home. If a qualified landscape designer, or a landscape architect, should have a good understanding of the balance in your hardscape, cross street, tree canopy, and all of that, a well-balanced design, that's what I think, helps all of us actually a lot, too. So requiring that on new development, I think it should be as one of the requirements, a must. We should have that a little more. So I would, and for any major remodeling, we should ask for the same thing, for major remodeling.
Yes, so we could have the same standards that we use as far as major remodeling and then new homes.
Correct.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Okay, I'm moving along here. The next one is, okay, this is a Los Angeles special. You know that I advised the City of L.A. for a long time, and I was very surprised when I came to the City of San Marino and did not, we did not regulate FAR, floor area ratio. It's just something that I have always seen, and I personally think is a good way to regulate density. And, you know, a floor ratio, I guess, it would be some kind of, you can't have more than a certain percentage of your floor area versus the parcel, you know, it's a floor area versus land, if you will, and a certain ratio to try to keep the massing and the density to a particular level. So I think adding a code requirement that now changes it, right now, we talk about living space, we talk about lot coverage, it's something to think about, something to think about, whether you want to move it, and you certainly want to hear staff weighing in on that, but to move it more to an FAR kind of analysis. Commissioners, what do you think?
I would agree, I think that that particular metric helps incorporate the concept of visual massing into the formula, so it helps put sort of a hard stop. I mean, we always have the flexibility of going to the subjective criteria of the Design Review Guidelines, but it would be nice to have a sort of hard stop that incorporates that type of massing into the code.
The only, the only thing I want to say is, because of the city's mix of different neighborhoods, a hot number of percentage of development may not work between certain neighborhoods. So if you go to the Estee area, lots, a lot bigger, if you apply the same percentage of home coverage versus the land parcel size to the development size, or you go down to the Mission District, we'll have a very lopsided outcome at the end.
I agree, and that's a common way, I should have said, in L.A., for example, they do have different FARs based on the particular zone.
Correct. So we're gonna have to look at that very carefully, because it may not work with these existing percentages of development right now. So, yes, we should look into that.
Anyone else who wants to weigh in? Okay, this next one is something that I'm just gonna say I'm kind of ambivalent about, and I really wanted to know the other Commissioners, and particularly Raymond, I want to know what you think, because you've had, oh, no, he's my guru, because you've had so much experience. And this has to do with who to decide new homes. And Council members, I know you know that when you adopted the Historical Preservation Ordinance, you changed the body that would review new homes, homes over 50, that are, you know, over 50% demoed and brand-new homes. It was DRC, and now it's Planning Commission. And I honestly can see that both ways, because on one level, I have a lot of respect for DRC being the design people, and it would be nice that it could come to the Planning Commission on appeal when we could actually see their, have their recommendations and have that evidence, if you will, before us. The other side of me worries that if it doesn't get appealed, something would be built that we, the Planning Commission, wouldn't like, and anything that goes to Planning Commission, of course, is applicable to Council, is a way to check us if we're not as design savvy. And of course, we have John, so I never really worry about being design savvy, but that's, so I, I'm not sure. It's something I raised, it's something that I thought of in the year, the past year, because we would get these just huge, brand-new projects and so many design elements, and we didn't have DRC's input. So, I don't know, colleagues, what do you think?
I'll give it a shot. I set on both the DRC before and the Planning Commission before. If you have a qualified group of people on either commission, that should not be a problem. What happened is that the DRC can approve, whoops, did I miss it?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. So the DRC works on projects that are not CUP required, non-variants required, so they pretty much work with the, within the perimeter of the co-alaws, within the guidelines, within the percentage of coverage, lot coverage, height limits, and all of that. So no deviation can be approved by the DRC. Anytime they exceeded that, then it has to go to the Planning Commission. I think that rule basically works if you have the right people at the DRC. So I think, I think they should be able to look at new homes also. That's my two cents.
New homes without any request for CUP or variants or something like that?
Correct. They do not have the ability to approve anything with DRC, with variants or CUPs on the agenda anyway. They can only work on the design approval, design review only, yeah.
All right, anyone else?
I would just say that it's not anything that I had considered before, but I think, you know, I guess I just want to say that I kind of have no opinion, but it sounds as though, it sounds as though that if the checks and balances are in place, and you're right, Raymond, if the correct people or, you know, design-minded people are appointed to either DRC or Planning Commission, then I think that, you know, we'll be able to make sure that it's being seen by the right people to ensure that we're not having, you know, monstrosities or anything like that. I'm not speaking very well, but I think you all know what I'm trying to say. It's been a long day.
I know, it has. Anyone else, any other Commissioners? Okay, well, that's my main substantive. I have one little technical request, because I'm blaming Aldo. Aldo tells me the Council has to do this, so I'm blaming Aldo, I just want you to know, which is, which is my request, that staff recommendations be placed up front in the reports. I feel very frustrated when I'm reading these reports and I'm kind of confused and finally have to go past, you know, three or four pages and go, well, what are they recommending? Oh. And yes, I admit it, I had my, that was the City of L.A. thing, we always had the recommendations up front, so I was used to it. But I personally think it's a cleaner way to present a report. So that's a very small thing, very technical thing, but I just wanted to add that. So that's my list, which did go through, sorry.
A couple of things, we did discuss this among our leadership, and that some of the agendas are consistent with the City Council agenda, which we always have the staff recommendation under, essentially under the title, on the agenda itself, so that there's something to refer to right there, that is the staff recommendation, and that would be more consistent with us, if, my understanding is, that there are some of our commissions and committees and boards that have them in different locations. So part of it would be, to make it all consistent, we would be moving up staff recommendations so that it would appear on your agenda, and then like us, the recommendation would also be on the last page of the staff report, which I know is complicated, because you often have lengthy staff reports and then have attachments, but that's how it's typically handled for us.
That, that works.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I think we would like to make everybody consistent, and I know that our City Manager and Director Cervantes are already aware, well aware of that, and so we're gonna try to do that across the board, but we appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
All right, so that's the list that I sort of brought forward with my fellow colleagues, so I don't know if I have anything else.
I think you skipped broad sizes.
Oh, well, I didn't say that one, because it's so embarrassing. I wrote that down somewhere in the, in the year, and honestly, I have no idea what I meant. So that's why I didn't raise it, and none of the other Commissioners really had a big issue about it. So I'm not, maybe next year, maybe next year, I'll be, I'll figure out what I meant, unless Aldo, unless Aldo can help me. What did I mean, Aldo?
Don't remember them, sorry.
I'm sorry, so that's why I didn't raise it. I know, Gretchen and I talked about it, but, sorry.
All right, and do any of the other Commissioners have things that they'd like to put forward? Now, I don't know, I know that, I think it was Aldo kind of surveyed everybody, but now hearing these, or since Director Cervantes, I'm sorry, I didn't use your formal name, that if, since that time, if you had anything that you wanted to add to our discussion tonight, because it is very helpful, and I know you've had lengthy meetings often at times, some of which will be handled if we clean up some of these things, but there are also plenty of issues out there still, so we'd really like to get your input, because we are interested in improving the process and improving the end results as well, making your commission work better for you.
I don't have any additional comments.
I don't either. All right, so I now have to, would like to open this up to the public to speak at this time, and so I would ask if anybody does have a comment. On my screen, I do see, we have a number of more participants now, we also have some chat requests, and I, so if Acting City Clerk Merlo would let us know if she's received comments and go through that process, so, and if you are a member of the public, please raise your hand, as she indicated earlier, or send in a chat or an email. I'll sign off.
Just give me one moment, it looks like it came on our other screen and not mine, so we're getting it set up here. We have one comment from Ms. Christina Foo, says, "A delayed response regarding the suggestion of LEED certified for residential. Please research the LEED requirements before implementing it. It is very costly and difficult, would make it almost impossible for most homeowners to build their home."
All right, I wanted to see, is there any other comments that have been emailed in during the meeting, or on this specific topic, I guess? We did public comments generally, but now we may have some that have been sent in dealing with planning issues that were brought up by Chair Wright, or other things that need to be brought to our attention from the community.
I do not have any emailed comments and further chat comments.
All right, do we have any City Council members then? I'll close the public discussion portion and just see if we had any questions or comments from my fellow Council members. Councilmember Wong?
Yes, I just want to thank all the Commissioners who are volunteering their time, and you know, you are a very important group, because, I mean, I hate beating a dead horse, but I came in to preserve the neighborhood for our city, so, you know, I would count on you guys to continue to do whatever you can to do that. And you were, someone mentioned about, you know, like the candidates or the Commissioners for DRC and Planning Commission. Actually, it all depends on the City Council, because we and Aldo, I mean, liaisons and Aldo, we do the selections. So I just want you guys to keep up the good work and help me preserve our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wong. Councilmember Taut?
Yeah, can you hear me? Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, we can no longer see you.
That's okay, I like it that way. Two things about what we're talking about, first of all, with respect to the notice issue, we have struggled with that for a long time. My recommendation is, is that you have put it on your, on the Planning Commission calendar and have a open public discussion as to what you believe should be the recommendations with respect to notice, and then we could adopt those at the city, but you guys deal with it, obviously, more often than we do, so it might be best, as the Planning Commission, you discuss the notice requirements. Secondly, I would like to thank you all very much for the efforts that you guys make. I know, just on the few matters that get appealed to us, how much time we have to put in reviewing plans and reviewing standards. I'm concerned that half of our committee, and I cannot believe people who's a party that want to get sued based upon that. You guys should review the facts, review the plan, and apply whatever discretion or obligation that you have under our ordinances. You guys cannot be sued, people would have to appeal it to the City Council and have it be a City Council lawsuit, or City Council action before there can be a lawsuit filed. Those attorneys on President know that, so please, in the future, don't concern yourself at all whether it's going to be sued, whether you're going to be sued. If you, if you like your decision, then bump it up. If someone's going to appeal it, then it's gonna get appealed and the City Council will take the action. But once again, thank you all for your time.
Excuse me, Mayor, I do have a public comment I received during public comment that did not show up until right now. If you'd like, I can still read it.
Yes, please do, thank you very much. I know this, again, there's a technical lag time for most of these things, so thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you, and I'm sorry to interrupt your comments, but here is a comment from Ms. Cordelia Donnelly, says, "Dear Acting City Clerk, please express my public comments for the Planning Commission meeting. One, it is my understanding that the California general law requires notification to be done by applicant. However, the state does not require applicant to guarantee such notification. It is silly of city to seek to make notification requirements any more strict since higher law does not require it. Two, hardscape needs to be regulated to allow water runoff to be captured underground. Three, density is not regulated by city. Four, landscape plan should only be required of California general law. If California general law for general law cities requires it. Sincerely, Cordelia Donnelly." Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Donnelly, for bringing that to our attention. Next, I think, Councilmember Jacobowski, did you have any comments about it today, any of the items today?
Thank you, Mayor. I can be heard okay?
Yeah.
Great. I think we're hearing this reoccurring theme about notices, and going back five years to when I was part of Planning Commission, I remember vividly how distraught legal neighbors were when they claimed that they had no knowledge of the project. So we're looking at not only the initial notice, but also about continuances, and I'm very pleased that you care enough to bring this to us, and every single one of us would want to know what's going on in our neighborhood, and as was mentioned, particularly if it's changed. I'd like to direct this, I might presume that Commissioner Chang, hello, and Commissioner Dustin might be the two longest, if not two of the longer-serving. Are you seeing any fewer legal neighbors coming out than what you had seen in your, earlier in your term, or do you feel that that's been remaining consistent?
I'll try to answer that. I guess it depends on the neighborhood. A certain neighborhood tends to attract more attention and interest from the neighbors. I would say Gainesboro, Lorain, certain streets of neighborhood will bring out a lot more people than some neighborhoods. That's my past experience. But if you ask me comparing to 10, 12 years ago, when I started back in the DRC or Planning Commission, I would say that currently, the number of neighbors that showed up is actually less than what we used to have. I remember seeing almost every project bringing at least one or two concerned neighbors, even in the immediate neighborhood or outside of legal neighborhood, they would come and speak. Nowadays, it seems like it's a little bit less than what we used to see, and that's the way it is. And I don't think the, it's notice issue, I think people do get the notice, it's just that maybe people are too busy, and they just look at the plan, and if it really doesn't bother them that much, they would just put down no objection or no response and just leave it at that. I've seen a lot more of those non-responsive notices, looking at each application. This is what I gather recently.
That's helpful, thank you.
I would agree with Raymond's characterization, I mean, I don't know that I've been on Planning Commission long enough to sort of anecdotally describe the volume from years ago versus now. I would say there's been a slight trend in fewer concerned neighbors, but definitely what Raymond mentioned about certain neighborhoods, I think particularly in neighborhoods or streets, where there has been a history of, for lack of a better word, bad projects going up, there's a particular sensitivity to any new project that appears in those neighborhoods or on those streets.
Thank you. Other than that, I appreciate everyone's service. I think it really contributes greatly to the beauty, or not, of our city, and I think we've got a great group right now, and thank you each for your service. I know some of you will be transitioning, so you are very much appreciated.
Thank you, Councilmember Jacobowski. Vice Mayor Udi, did you have any comments?
First of all, thank you for being on the front line and taking, taking the heat for us, appreciate it. And I echo what Steve was saying, is stand by your guns and do what you think is in the best long-term interest of the city, and if it gets appealed, you know, the Council will take the heat for it, so keep moving forward, and I like your suggestions, particularly the guidelines for hardscapes and backyards, that feels huge to me. The notice provisions is something we can probably figure out, and then requiring landscaping plans, I think would be absolutely critical. So thank you for the recommendations.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Udi. I also wanted to, I, first of all, I did see a comment come in on our chat feature, it's a statement from Ms. Christina Foo, so I wanted to have Amanda just to make sure the record does reflect that. I don't know if you've got it on one of the screens, or I just see it, I don't really know how the chat feature directs things, some are private and some are not, so if you could read that into the record, because she is attending this, and it did come in, I think when we were wrapping up sort of the agenda item which deals with the issue, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, so the message comes from Christina Foo, and it says, "I do not have a problem notifying neighbors."
Thank you, so probably has, has a project or has had a project and successfully contacted her neighbor, so I appreciate that. And I know it is an issue, we've, I appreciate that you, Chair Wright, excuse me, brought it to our attention. brought it to our attention, because we've had discussions with staff ongoing, and it is sometimes particularly painful when somebody comes in, when the project is even done or almost done, and it's gone through several continuances. And that was the first time they've heard or seen of it. I think that was probably before Planning Commission this year. And that was, you know, really a difficult situation, that they had not known about a particular project until so late, after you all have put in so much work, and then it was, it made even more for everybody involved. So I appreciate that we need to hopefully hear from you. I think that was Councilmember Taut's suggestion. And it could be on your agenda item to really think about the best way we can change our notice provisions, so that they are more thorough perhaps. And then that could come before council, and we could take some action on the item, let's say, and discuss it further. So I appreciate that, and all the suggestions. The hardscape in the backyard is a huge issue for water runoff, as well as the environment and the climate and heat. And I do know that a lot of those projects recently have had a significant amount, much more so than we do regulate in the front. So that's something we all need to take a look at. And I appreciate the other suggestions as well. And we were trying to figure out the right slice of the DRC versus Planning Commission review of new homes. So that's something to think about. But I appreciate Chair, past Chair Chang's, Commission members' suggestions and thoughts on that, because it is kind of a strange line we're trying to create in order to divide up the work equally. And I appreciate that we need to take a little look at that and make sure we're doing it the best way. Also, something that we didn't discuss, but we have the historic resource survey hopefully coming forward, and we're going to need to grapple with how that gets, you know, involved in our decision-making, Planning Commission, and at DRC. So we will probably look to you all for some guidance when that comes, hopefully this fall. But, so I wanted to give you a little bit of a heads up. And I know Director Savantes is working with the community, and working with our professionals, consultants on that. And so that'll be exciting for our city too. And I think it'll really help our situation, as Councilmember Wong stated. You know, preservation is dear to many of us, or all of us, and it makes San Marino the unique city it is. So that'll be exciting when we have the document, the lists, and different things, perhaps districts. So we're going to have a lot to think about in regard to that, and we would appreciate your input on that. I think it will be an exciting time and a positive step for our city. I don't know if there's any other questions or comments by anybody on council. You can chat or jump in. Or as well as if anybody on Planning Commission wants to make a final comment based upon anything that's been said. All right, then.
I'm going to just say, and I just want to thank the city council for being so supportive all these years that I've been serving on both the commissions. And, and I think it's looking back to see how the city has developed. Just by driving around town, seeing some of these projects have been gone through the process, approved, and how they come out. I think overall, the system is working compared to before DRC time. I, as I said, a lot of projects came in prior to DRC time, and we had the opportunity to clean it up per se. Working with the new property owner, trying to improve it correctly, and try to make it more consistent and more compatible. So I think the system is working. I want to thank the city council for being so supportive on both the DRC and the Planning Commission. That's, I'm happy to say that.
I'll just comment on what Councilmember Wong said. It really does come down to you guys when you're selecting members from the applicant pool. I know you're sort of limited by the applicant pool, but we have some pretty big shoes to fill with the departures that we're going to be having. And so I wish you all best in fulfilling those empty slots.
Start recruiting.
I have been.
Actually, I think the applications are due today. Maybe by midnight, I don't know. But so immediately call, because I know that we need some great minds to join. Unfortunately, some Planning Commission members have, are termed out, so they can't keep repeating despite us, our desire to continue their, their great service to the city. So we do have some seats that are quite vacant and positions. And so we're looking both for people on planning and on DRC. And so today, the deadline was extended from last week, and today is the last day. So if you have anybody, have them get their name in there, and they can, please send it in today. That would be great. We'd appreciate it. I know it's a lot of time and service, and we so appreciate what you do, but it makes a huge difference to our community. And I do believe also that the projects are better and continue to get better with all of your input and careful consideration. And that really makes a big difference permanently, long-term, for the city to be as special as it is in architecture, and greenscape, and everything else, and trees. So I appreciate, had to add that in, you know I do. And I appreciate all that you do. I'm sorry we can't have a celebration or join you today, but I think this was excellent. And I really appreciate you taking the time and giving us some feedback on what you've noticed this past year that's critical, that we deal with in the upcoming months. And we will try to get those things started and through the system. But I really thank you all so much for doing the work that we need and helping us. And as all of my council members agree, that we couldn't do what we do without you and your input. So thank you. I guess I get to continue to see if there's any written communications or public writings that need to be distributed. I don't believe that we received anything in writing regarding this. And seeing shaking of heads from city staff, and as well as the city manager, I guess not. So we have the closing public comments. Is there anybody else who would like to, or anybody who would like to speak at this time by Zoom, or submit a final comment or thought by this platform, or by sending an email? We'll wait a couple, little bit, and see if anybody from the public would like to comment. Otherwise, we will adjourn.
Do not have any further emails or comments.
And I'm looking at the chat box, and I don't see anything other than, oh. We do have two that have come in. Okay, I think somebody's trying to send it in, so that's fine. Mr. Paul Laycon is trying to input a comment, so that's fine. Amanda, if you want to read, or I can read, Christina, Ms. Foo also wants to thank everybody. So that was her comment. Thank you, everyone.
And for Paul Laycon's comment, the initial comment says, "Would the city council consider requiring window changes?" And I'm not sure, there might be more coming, but that was the initial comment.
Right. There's another comment that says, "I'm trying," so I think that it got cut off, or there's some technical difficulties. So we'll wait a minute. It's fine if Mr. Laycon is still there. Or it can be sent in to City Clerk, sorry.
The follow-up to the comment was, "When windows change materials, can they go to DRC instead of over the counter?"
Okay, I believe that is a question. I don't know if we have Director Savantes can answer that now, or?
No, I can. I can answer that. And as the council is aware, we have a pre-approved windows materials list that allows for, which does include a variety of different materials, including wood, natural wood materials, to, to the, what we call aluminum clad products, as well as one fiberglass product. And for historic purposes, we do allow for the steel casement windows as well. And so a request to replace windows on any particular home is dependent upon the style that's being chosen with respect to the window and materials. We, as the guidelines require, the windows need to be replaced like the like in terms of style, in traditional style, meaning that the grid pattern must stay the same. The molyne size must also stay the same. All this creating sort of a seamless transition between the existing look of the home, as well as the proposed look of the home. And certainly, the council could, could look to direct the city to require design review for the replacement of windows. That is a policy direction, as it does not exist at the moment. But I leave that up to the council to make a direction on that.
Madam Mayor, you are muted at the moment. And you can't unmute? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, now, it said the host was keeping me from talking, was muting my microphone. So I'll have some words with our Acting City Clerk on my arrival. Now, it was, I was just going to follow up that comment, and I appreciate that. I don't know whether replacement of windows on projects or remodels has really gotten discussed thoroughly before Planning Commission, because typically that is a DRC item, you know, that would come before DRC. And I know that there have been some issues with window replacements on projects this year. So that might be also something we can hear from them on at a joint meeting with DRC. And I'm not sure the timeframe for when that would happen. But I would hope we could have a discussion about that and get their input. But if any of the Planning Commissioners today want, or have observed these problems, or not problems, or think that the system is working fine, if you could give us your input on that, I would appreciate it.
I think Raymond's trying to talk.
Well, yeah, let me just share that based on my past experience. It was something that the homeowner just wanted to replace some windows. And it does not affect the existing architecture style based on what Aldo was saying earlier. If they work with the P-approved window selection list, then I think staff can do a good job working with them. What I've seen problem is that they picked the right window, but they picked the wrong type as far as the, the jam detail or the hair and seal detail. And once they pick up the old window, the new size that they bought this and fit, and they try to patch it with some stucco, and/or physically it doesn't work, and the waterproofing is not there. I've been seeing a lot of projects that have that problem over the years. And, and they thought they got it done based on the city's requirement, but they missed the technicality of how to replace it correctly. So, so the final outcome is that either it leaks, or it got a big gap in there, like an inch and a half gap between the two sides, top or bottom, and/or the seal doesn't work, and so it failed there. As actually, I remember seeing a few projects that failed. We have to go in and try to help them at the end. So I think the staff can look at it, and if they understand what they're doing, if they hired the correct people to do it, meaning the replacement of the window is the correct type, it may work. Otherwise, they may have to go to DRC. And I, and I think if you're talking about replacing many windows, then I think they really should look at, go to DRC, especially if there's any front elevation changes. That, that would be the right way to go with that, to take care of that.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Chang. I agree, and hear your comments, particularly about the front elevation change. Thank you. Knowing that this is the public comment period, can't really take action, but I would appreciate, we will take note of this, and staff as well. We have Director Savantes with us, so we can discuss this on future occasions, should it be an agenda item properly, notarized, noticed. So do we have any other public comments that we need to have either read in the record? I don't have access to emails. I can just see the chats.
I do not have any other email comments. No further comments.
All right. So thank you very much, everyone. I really appreciate it. Appreciate your service. For those that are not joining us, please join DRC, please, please, please. And thank you for tonight and participating and helping us. I will adjourn the meeting then, and ask the council members to meet me shortly for our regularly scheduled council meeting. And again, thank you so much. I hope everybody stays safe and well, particularly at this, at this more dangerous time, let's say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners. Inky, what's going on?